...an agenda, I think there are some in the back. We welcome public comment. We have a form for you to fill out if you'd like to be involved with anything here. We have public comment at the start of the meeting. We have public comment at the end of our regular business. And we also have a public comment timed at 5:15. Today, our opening exercise is, Ms. Ginger Bryant has opening and the last. So Ginger, it's all yours.
Thank you, Doug. I was at Chris Trevor High School when they did the Crest and Key Training Center fielding. And this beautiful little girl sang, and I thought, oh, I like her voice. So I found Mr. Garlock, and he'll show you why. Mr. Garlock? Mr. Garlock is the choral director at Chris Trevor High School.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Thank you, and thank you, school board. I would like to introduce Sidney Lacston.
Hello.
She's great to see you.
So I have two songs prepared for you today. I performed two at my school for showcases, and I actually competed one at the district festival, and I got an excellence on it. It was like, good school. One is, they're two musical songs, so you might not know them. That's okay. I like them, and they're nice. Jamie is over and Jamie is gone. Jamie's decided to find a home. Jamie has dreams he's built upon. And I'm still hurting. Jamie cried at the end of life. Jamie convinced that the problems are mine. Jamie is probably feeling just fine. But I'm still hurting. What about lies, Jamie? What about things that you swore to be true? What about you, Jamie? What about you? Jamie is sure something wonderful died. Jamie decided to write to the side. Jamie's got secrets he doesn't confine. And I'm still hurting. Go and hide and run away. Run away. Run and find something better. Go and ride the sun away. Run away. Like it's simple. Like it's right. Give me a day, Jamie. Bring back the lies. Have them back on the wall. Maybe I'd see how you could be so certain that we had no chance at all. Jamie is over and when can you turn? Covered with scars and nothing to earn. Maybe there's somewhere a lesson to learn. That wouldn't change the fact. That wouldn't speed the time. Once the foundation's cracked. And I'm still hurting. Go ahead, throw your rocks at me from your little glass house, and then take up running. You're no better than me. We both made mistakes, haven't we? I won't undo what I'm doing. You're sick in judgment of what makes us human. I don't claim to be proud, but my head won't be hung in shame. I didn't plan it, but the light turned red, and I ran it. And I'm still standing. It's not what I wanted, but now that it's right here. I understand it. My story written by my own hand. It's life, I need to rise at your heels. I didn't plan it, but it's finally something to feel. Oh, wow. Look around you, ain't no safety here, baby. We're all just looking for a little less crazy. And sometimes, it's a hard left turn. Down running, you never thought you'd see. I didn't plan it. Take it back what's been taken for granted. 'Cause I can't stand it. I'm sick of the way I've been waiting to break free. I needed saving, and a good mistake needed making. Maybe you need the same thing. Something to feel, to raise the blood, and remind you, you're here to open your eyes and look around and see the sky. When I look around, I didn't plan it, but that's life. And I finally feel it alive. It's not right, but it's mine. And it's finally something to feel.
You're awesome.
Sidney, you need to come back. Sidney, you need to come back and tell us who you have with you.
Oh, you're right. So I have promised Mr. Garlock to accompany me.
Yes.
Great. This last one is here. My family here, my mom, my dad are here, supporting. And then my theater teacher and mentor, Mr. Sheeran is here.
Who did Diary of an Anne Frank. Diary of Anne Frank this year, too. Congratulations, it was a great.
Thank you. And we have a show coming up first weekend in May. It's called Forbidden Broadway. Outstanding Forbidden Broadway, it's very humorous, it's comical, it's...
It's in the fifth.
All right. If you'll please stand and do the pledge for you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Garlock and Sidney. Great. Go Pirates! And Sidney's mom is a teacher.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. Sidney, great job, and appreciate you opening up our meeting for us.
Thank you for having me.
I would like to point out that we do not have one of our school board members here tonight. Ms. Lynn Powers, she was at an earlier meeting today. We had a joint meeting with the county commission, we had a workshop meeting at the courthouse, eight o'clock, and she was there, but I think we all knew she was feeling real well, and I understand that she's not able to be here today. So we do miss her presence here, but we will continue on. Ms. Smith, do you have something to add?
Yes, before you pick off the agenda, we'd like to pull a copy or lease off the agenda, and we'll bring it back another time.
I'm sorry, you have to pull.
Yeah, copy or...
The copy or lease. Okay. So that is, on page two, that would be Roman numeral number six. K, number six, is the RFP on the systems business solution. So we're going to go ahead and pull that from the agenda completely, correct? So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
We approve the adoption of the agenda as recommended by the superintendent, with the exception of the 6K.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Couts, the second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the adoption of the agenda as recommended by the superintendent after pulling item 6K, Roman numeral 6K6. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye opposed, motion passes four to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is our first time for citizen comments, and we do have a green form here, filled out by... All right. I'm sorry, that is correct. Is this an agenda item? We do have, we opened our meeting with comments about items on the agenda, and from what I see in this item, Ms. Smith, it looks like it's...
Yeah, it's for 515.
Okay, I apologize, that's my bad. Are there any other citizen comments for any items on the agenda? Anyone else like to speak about any items on the agenda? Okay, if not, we're going to move to Roman numeral number three, to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, the second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We will do recognitions of donations now. We could have that, please, Ms. Burnham? Again, Ms. Adele?
Yes.
Could you get your microphone there? Is it...
I don't have one.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Approve the $650 donation to Floris City Elementary from Wolfen and Regina Freewall in the Shamrock Inn of Floris City. Approve the $1,000 donation to Encanto High School from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust. Approve the $1,000 donation to Christopher High School from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust, Chair Michael Tringali, CPA trustee. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from All Florida White Proofing and Construction, excuse me, Construction A. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust, Chair Michael Tringali, CPA trustee. Approve the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Business Rugby Club. Approve the $600 donation to the Marine Science Station from Rugby Club of Christopher American. And approve the $750 donation to the Marine Science Station from Juanas Club of Amornas. Superintendent Kenhold, and Chairman, and school board members, this is a total of $6,500.
Okay, that is excellent, and we appreciate our community's support of our schools. And once again, we've got a lot of generous people here that are helping us, so we appreciate that. That was on the consent agenda, so we've already approved those donations, but we'd like to make sure to call those out, because that does help us tremendously. Any comments from any of you on that?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, next up on the agenda is a presentation. Ms. Smith.
Mackenzie. Look at this. I would like to recognize Mackenzie Shaw today, that she was recently recognized as a Youth Volunteer of the Year for the Ellie Scheller Homosassa Springs Wildlife State Park. She started volunteering four years ago at the age of 12, and has contributed more than 650 hours. She is integral to the park team and represents the park service in a positive, professional way. Mackenzie is currently an 11th grader at Citrus High School, and is having a significant impact on our community. And I just wanted to present her today with the Superintendent's Making a Difference Award, because with all those hours of volunteer service, you certainly are making a difference in Citrus County. We appreciate and so proud.
Can I get a picture, Superintendent?
I did ask her she wants to speak, and she said, "Happy not."
Also have your plaque from the four parks, sorry. Congratulations.
Now, do you want to introduce the students today?
Sure. First, Missy Dintressa. This is Uncle Mike. And then my little brother, Logan. My aunt, Concha. My mom, Aunt Uncle Mike.
Is Uncle Mike as cool as he is up here? He's cool. Also, Ms. Marshall, we've got to congratulate you, because you and Forest Ridge did pretty good this last weekend.
Yes, we did.
And I think you took first place. And I apologize, I hope I'm not taking anything away from you, Ms. Shonda, but...
Oh, gosh, no.
And this, I think this, is this the first time you've won that, or maybe the second? Five times. That is congratulations. And CCEF had, I believe, a thousand four, five?
Thousand four, yes.
And I think there were over 3,000 people there. Great job.
So Mackenzie, I...
I'll miss.
None of us.
I was there, Thomas was there.
Yes.
We were supposed to wear these today.
Well, you're right.
The chairman had a few things on his mind today.
Flash with your belt.
I had a shirt on from one of the schools there that I was supporting. That was Forest Ridge Elementary. I did get signed up for them, but I was out to help with the runners' club, what a great program that is, that they have to offer for students. I got to tell you, I think our cross-country teams are going to continue to get better in high school after these kids are running so much. But Mackenzie, I want to thank you, as, I'm a volunteer at Fort Cooper State Park, and I was at one time the friends of the, I'm president of Friends of Fort Cooper, but I know you're from Amornas, you go to Citrus High, right? So, you know, if you want to change parks, come over. We'd love to have you there and put that amount of hours in.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I live in Homosassa. We're a neighbor. We're a neighbor.
Right. But that's a beautiful park in Homosassa. We've got a lot of great parks.
You don't have many of the Ts.
No, that's true. That's true. That's true, but we appreciate it, and congratulations.
Great job.
Okay, next up on the agenda is item, actually, we have two item fours, but item four, education services, Mr. Hebert. And this has to do with...
Doctor Hebert.
Doctor Hebert, thanks.
So I'm asking for, and actually, I have A, B, C, D, E, and F on here, so I don't know. Those are different.
Really?
I have approved the 2017-18 school volunteers.
Those are...
Those are sent.
Yeah. Just B.
B, okay. So I'm asking for approval that Dell purchased first computer replacement.
Mr. Chairman, I asked that we pull this item. This was a hard one for me to have to pull, but I feel like we needed to have some conversation. I serve on technology. Dr. Gettys and I talked about this. We know this morning, we had some serious and tough conversations about safety and security and obligations that we may or may not be having to do. My concern right now is, and I'm familiar with this purchase, because we've sat on steering committees of deciding exactly which system we're looking at and where we put them, and so I feel like, as a board member, I have a real solid idea of where we're going with this. These are needed. There's no question of that. Many of these systems are well past their useful years, but I think, as Dr. Gettys has said, we can go a little longer with those. And my thinking of why we should is, we still have this unknown about hardening in our schools. We're concerned about where capital is going to come from to cover that. I know behind this purchase, or this request, is we also have the one-to-ones coming up. And there's been a lot of planning for that, a lot of, I know Ed Services has been working behind the scenes, professional development. We've had teachers asking for that for years. And we're going to have to make some tough decisions. I'm thinking, what we do right now is just ask, maybe if the superintendent could delay this for maybe a couple of months till we have a better idea from the state as to some of the obligations we're going to have. And then, you know, with Dr. Gettys' team, TRC, we have Ms. Androski that's going to be coming on board, and Mr., who's here a second ago, Steve Chamberlain. They can look at this and decide how they want to bring it back forward. So that's just my suggestion. Rather than suggesting a table, and I'm just wondering if maybe we could just delay this at this time. And board members, please chime in, but I'm just thinking...
A delay to come back on the agenda for...
Come back on the agenda, once we know more of what we're dealing with this summer with some of these capital requests that I think the state may be coming to us.
Well, I was thinking a long time ago, I had asked these people as well.
It's not our choice, these things that are being mandated, that we know we have to pay for.
Yeah, I mean, there is no person that wants this technology and the technology, but we have to be prudent, and this board always has been. So I think we do that.
Does the board agree we'll raise back to June, June, June?
Yeah, and I think the answer really is, once you know more of what's going on, and that would be to me, June, July. I think Dr. Gettys said, right now, we're not going to be able to, we're really not going to be able to implement this, even if we voted today. A lot of this may not take place into the first of next year anyway. So by delaying right now, we're really not changing anything that the schools aren't already prepared for. If I thought that were the case, I would probably have a different conversation. So that's just my suggestion. All right, Ms. Couts?
I agree. We've got some unknowns and unknown figures that we're going to have to deal with or mandate to pay for them, and we can postpone this for any amount of time till we don't have fixed costs on what we're dealing with with the school resources. So will we put this on the agenda?
It will.
All different.
And the appropriateness is, is that it was time to come forward to us. So, I mean, I think staff did the right thing by bringing it to us. These are just those decisions we have to make.
And it won't be a major impact. I've spoken to Dr. Gettys and Ms. Androski, and I think, once we have a better handle on the funding, then we can make decisions for the following year and move forward in that. And both of them feel very confident Ms. Androski will be taking the lead on that, because Dr. Gettys will not be with us, but she's very willing and capable to help us move forward.
Please, not have that conversation.
All right, so we might need to have a motion to...
Then I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the June meeting.
Second.
Are you in the motion?
Regular meeting, thank you, sir.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy, the second by Ms. Couts, to table this education services request to prove Dell computers, computer replacement. Is there any other discussion? I'm sorry, to the June, to the July. What do you mean, what do you say?
He said June.
Let's do June, and then we can always readdress it at that time if, you know, because I think you all will know where you're at.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone it until June. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, board members, and thank you, staff.
I'd ask that you bear with me, I'm going to do my best Susie Sweeney impression as staff. Actually, she's up in Ohio, actively recruiting teachers for the upcoming school year. Today, I'm before you to request approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Golden Rod.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the instructional and support recommendations as recommended on the Golden Rod.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, the second by Ms. Couts, to approve the personal and support information on the Golden Rod as presented.
I have one question to ask.
Ms. Smith.
We've got two resignations that are still ongoing investigations, and I'd like to be sure that those investigations are recognized as voluntary, and we have a commitment to continue with the investigation and closing.
They resigned during the investigation, we still... If they resigned during an investigation, we still complete the investigation because we have to stick to professional practices. They're no longer our employee after you accept the resignation, and so there's a request to...
The resignation's involuntary, then?
Correct. All resignations are voluntary.
Maybe that's the date of their resignations on each other.
Correct. So in the case of Diana Volitich, is that investigation not yet completed?
The investigation will probably be completed and delivered to her this week. So it does not become public record. The way it works is, you complete the investigation, you cannot put anything derogatory, I'm saying that there is or there isn't, but you can't put anything derogatory in someone's personal file without giving them notice of it and the right to return it with a 10-day right or so, according to statute 101, 2.31. So it has to be delivered to her, either hand-delivered or by certified mail, return receipt requested. Once it's delivered, then the 10-day clock runs at the end of that, and that investigation becomes public record.
So the resignation is not being accepted in lieu of termination? Is that what you're telling me? Because we haven't seen the report yet.
The employee's just resigning during the, well, I don't know what the superintendent's recommendation would be, or what the board would do if it was, came to a hearing, but she's no longer our employee after you accept the resignation. So we finished the investigation, there does not have to be a recommendation for any type of, if there's probable cause for it, there does not have to be a recommendation for any type of discipline to the board. And so, but you still have to complete the investigation, because for professional practices in regard to her license, we have to send it up to professional practices.
So how do we ensure that this case is going to be dealt with in the most severe possible manner? I mean, it goes to professional practices until action.
Correct. And they can do what they want as far as her license is concerned.
It's out of our hands.
That's out of our hands. We have no control over how professional practices handle these licensing issues.
So I have a little bit of struggle here, because I have not got to review the investigation. I mean, what I have seen, and what has been made very apparent to me, is some very strong accusations. strong accusations that makes it troubling for me to accept a resignation. If it was in lieu of termination, that would be a lot better, in, in my mind, to be able to say to the public that this person was, has resigned in lieu, in lieu of termination, and will be proceeding with professional, um, standards of the state of Florida in reference to her teaching certificate. So what I wanted to know is, what do we do to ensure that this is able to be approved?
Can we finish the investigation? Go ahead.
I was gonna say, the board has two options today. I have no authority as superintendent to deny anyone's resignation when they bring it into us, even, no matter what it is, before or after an investigation, doesn't matter. What I'm obligated to do is to bring it to the board. The board has two choices today. Do we accept the resignation? And it says on the form during an ongoing investigation, which tells anyone that someone resigned as an ongoing investigation. Your second choice is to deny the, my recommendation, or not my recommendation, but what I brought to you as a board, I cannot tell you today if I would, not, if I would have recommended termination or not, because the, um, uh, the investigation is getting ready to be closed. So I would not make any recommendation on that. So you're, we have to do what we're bound to do, bring you her resignation, and you all either accept it today or not. If you don't accept it, then, um, other than what happened.
Well... If she, if we accept the resignation today, the investigation is gonna be completed, and the file will be forwarded to the appropriate authorities that have, we don't have any jurisdiction over her, her license or certificate. So if, I don't see how we can really not accept a resignation that's been given us voluntarily. We'll finish our investigation, and we'll forward it to, to DOE, and then it's DOE's job to take it from there.
I agree.
And, and that's been the practice that I remember in the years that I've always been here. Anytime a person resigns in the middle of an investigation, they can do that, we still have, uh, the superintendent is still investigating that. When it's finished, it's sent to the proper authorities, and, and usually it's, um, practices.
Without discussing any particular case, if a complaint is filed, and the employee walks in the next day and submits a resignation, and the board accepts it, we still have to finish the, the investigation before, if they're licensed and they're teaching, because that, that has to go to professional practices.
And that's been, that's always, we do, this happens all the time.
So in the case of Amanda Crawford, we have a, a, in lieu of termination, and now, so that, you're saying is because she did not resign until the investigation was complete? Is that...
She did not resign until the investigation was complete. She was recommended for termination. The board voted to move forward with termination proceedings, and then she resigned without going to the hearing. The other two that are on there during the course of the investigation resigned before the end of the investigation. When a resignation is submitted by board policy, the superintendent has to bring it to the board.
Past experience with most, any of these situations is, if, if, if the situation is that the person no longer wants to be employed by the district, that this board would have to be somehow taking action contrary to that, because we would not be accepting their recommend, their, their resignation, and then, I don't know how, what the superintendent will do once the investigation's done, or because she's not gonna know that. So to me, in this, in, in any of these situations, if someone does not wanna be employed by our school district, then, um, I think we, we accept that, and if there is investigation that's forwarded on, is, is always the standard practice.
Correct. We close it out at whatever time period that is, and it's sent, if they're, if they're a teacher or have a license, then we have to send it to the professional.
When will we have access to the investigation?
After the investigation is complete, it has to be delivered to the employee 10 days after the delivery of the test documents.
We have no other further obligations beyond that to, to anybody, right?
Correct.
Once we accept the resignation, our obligations are over.
Yes, she's no longer an employee. They're no longer employees of the school district, but they still have the right not to have anything placed on the personnel file without giving notice and having the 10 days to, is, is it 10-day response time? Is what it is?
We're gonna do it for that.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
But as a school board member, when do I have access to look at the investigative report?
10 days.
No?
10 days after.
When it becomes public record?
Because at any time, we may have, we, we would, in any ordinary circumstance of, of operation of business, have to then potentially sit in a ju, in a quasi-judicial manner, if that comes before us, so that's, and we had those situations where there was information released prior to that. We ended up having to send that to a DOA hearing, and, and I would just sue not send anything to a DOA hearing, and would rather make that decision here.
I mean, obviously, we have to weigh out the cost of legal proceedings versus the termination that's on the record, I guess, is what we're looking at. I mean, you guys...
You know, I don't wanna get into all the nuts and bolts, but you would have to have, you know, in a general sense, I don't wanna talk about any particular case that is down here, but the superintendent has to make a recommendation, and, and she's gonna make that recommendation based on the facts and everything that are contained therein, and it might, I mean, she, she can make a recommendation that just to do a 10-day suspension letter, which is by policy she can do, all the way up through termination to nothing, instead of hitting on a probable cause as found. So, I mean, not every case is gonna end up in front of the board.
Thank you.
There are multiple cases that never come before the board, because of, um, you know, agreements that are reached, or, or, um, because you've granted the superintendent the authority to suspend up to 10 days without board approval.
And my concern is that the vol, these resignations came involuntarily. We didn't ask for anything, though. We were following our procedures and policies, and...
Cannot force someone to resign.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm gonna vote to accept the resignation, but I, I, I'm not real happy, because I would rather see this come to a conclusion where we can see the information, but I understand the issue that we're dealing with.
She's, she's stopping. Not the investig, we're keeping the investigation going, she's stopping her own employment. I really, I feel obligated, they don't wanna be with us, I don't wanna, I don't wanna force them to be here.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, seeing now, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is, uh, our budget amendment number six.
Good afternoon. I would like to request approval of budget amendment number six, February 2018. Um, there are changes reflected in the general fund and the capital outlay fund. Um, the general fund, we have increased the fund balance by $17,000. This is mostly due to, um, our FTE went up, so we were able to bring some more capital over for our property, um, insurance, and we collected some money for damaged, uh, structural material. We received a check from FISBIT of $8,080 for Hurricane Irma costs, and, um, those are pretty much what affected the fund balance to bring us up to, uh, $17,000 more. The others are all mostly donations and things like that, which, the money comes in, the money goes right back out, so. In the capital fund, we closed out the Crest HVAC partial upgrade, and the Citrus High and Iverness Middle partial reroute, so some money did go back into the fund balance, the capital fund balance, which is a good thing, um, when we close those projects out.
I had a question on, when we looked at our undesignated fund balance, I know you're not gonna make a projection until, what, is it next month? Or, when do you make a projection on that?
Today.
Pardon me?
You'd ask me to present something today?
Oh, do you have that ready today?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wow, okay, that's great, thank you. I, I didn't know Chris Paul were not. All right, well, that, yeah, that was gonna be my question, because that's been kind of a topic of, of discussion, and, and, you know, we, uh, we're obligated to manage the school district's, uh, fiscal policy, and, uh, I think, I think it's good that we make sure all the board members are on the same page with this, as we look at what's coming up with, uh, the school resource option funding. Thank you.
Yes.
You wanna cover that now?
Do you wanna approve this?
Oh, okay, that's fine, let me count, if we can approve it, then, okay, all right. Um, are there, is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
I move to approve the budget amendment.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve budget amendment number six. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes four to zero. Thank you for that. I'm gonna, you wanna take over for the undesignated fund balance?
So I'll go ahead with this. Um, it's just a short little presentation. Um, this has been shared with the administrators in the district and with, um, the, um, you, teachers union. We shared this last week. Pretty much showing the general fund budget situation. When we got our third calculation, our FTE did go up. This increased our FEFP revenue by $571,295, but McKay scholarships took $506,621, so we netted $61,988 on the third calculation.
Woo-hoo!
Woo-hoo!
At least it's going positive, that's right.
A little bit counts.
Take it a quarter.
Talking about $20 before.
So, um, of course, our biggest issue is our human capital, and I, um, went out and counted again, and I got dizzy counting all the teaching positions we had open. I believe it's still at 61. I could've lost count in there a little bit, but we are definitely right around there for teaching positions. We also have many other, there's quite a few maintenance positions, bus drivers. Um, we're always needing subs, of course, in all areas. Eighty percent of our fu, general fund budget is salaries and fringe benefits. All right, so this is the, the, uh, chart you were asking about, Mr. Dodd?
Yes, yes, it is.
Looking at the projected ending fund balance at the end of 2018, this was based on the February figure, so we have not taken into consideration the amount that we promised the sheriff's office to complete the rest of this year, so that will need to still come out of the fund balance, um, this year. So, right now, we're looking at an undesignated fund balance of about 5.3. This is a, a positive in the black of $657,539. We do have to pay for those SROs out of that, and I can bring that to you at the workshop with that figure in there. So this leaves us...
The overall percentage?
The overall percentage is 4.74 right now.
We needed it five.
We needed it five, yes, ma'am. Just a reminder of our policy is 3.5. All right, this is just a little graphical depiction of our revenues versus our expenses over the last 10 years. We had several years where, of course, our expenses were way higher than our revenues, and right now, we're, we're at the point where we're ending the year a little bit in the black last year, hopefully a little bit more this year. Another graphical depiction of our fund balance, of course, the big dive of, uh, 2011, 12 and 13, down, 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 so, uh, we're headed back in the right direction. All right, so if we look at the, um, the, the final conference report that came down from the legislative, and we look at it at Citrus County versus the state, okay, our unweighted FTE is looking to increase 0.58 percent. Statewide, it's looking to increase 0.95, okay? Our millage will be decreasing by 0.236 mils. So even though our property value is going up, our millage is decreasing, therefore our tax revenue will be less next year than it is this year. Statewide, there is a decrease statewide of 0.217 mils. Our base student allocation increased 47 cents. All right. Safe schools statewide increased 151.27 percent. Citrus, we are seeing an increase of about 207.02 percent in our safe schools. All right, so here's our chart of the, um, final conference report versus this year. You'll notice property values are going up $476,266,717, but our millage is decreasing. You'll also see the base student allocation of 47 cents increase. And here we have our page with all the categoricals. Of course, our biggest increase is in safe schools. We're seeing an increase of $643,656. We're also seeing our mental health assistance allocation of $434,575. Everything else is, is within 20, 30,000, up or down, but as you can see, they're categorizing our funding even more. So bottom line, we're losing $276,046 in, uh, tax revenue for required local effort, and overall, $154.43 per unweighted FTE is our increase. Of course, most of that is categorized, so we don't have a lot of leeway to do with what we want. Most of it, they're telling us what to do. As we look forward, we need to look at our salary steps, our negotiated salary increases. We have a one-time market increase for our instructional staff that we are on year two of the three-year plan that we agreed to. School safety and mental health of students, of course, is at the forefront for everyone. Technology, health insurance, FRS is increasing, staffing, district-wide open enrollment for our students, and then, of course, the reduction in federal title grants. So all these will affect our fund balance. All right, so here's a little chart we put together today, based on, um, some figures we obtained from the sheriff's office today at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Do you want me to review it, Ms. Wilson? Okay, so, the state mandate says that we have to have an SRO in every school. There's 21 schools, so that's our first column. And we base the salary figures off of what the sheriff's gave us of the average SRO salary of their current employees. The middle column gives us the numbers, the figures for 23 SROs. Today, at the commission, the Citrus County Sheriff's Office wants 25 total, so these are some figures.
If you all look at that, if you all look at the first column, where we've got 21 SRO officers, that would be with the officer at every school site, okay? Which includes, as you can see, Crest and AES. Those would be the additional ones, and five additional, so that would be seven new officers on campus, okay? When Ms. Wilson goes to the second column, you notice 23 at the top, because the sheriff's office currently has in the SRO program, one lieutenant and one sergeant that is currently part of the program.
Are they the two that are here right now?
Correct. So if you add those two in there, then we're looking at 23 officers, counting the seven that we know that we need for the five and the, um, one of each AES and Crest. Okay, so that's, and if she's got the line, I don't know, possibly. But that figure that we heard of nine new.
Nine would be the last.
Nine would be the last column.
Okay.
Do we have any questions on this? This is just how much it costs the sheriff's office to employ their deputies, based on the figures they gave us today.
In our understanding on the column, in the last column, um, Sheriff Doddman and Stat Matt, was that they discussed to add one for WTC, and then add one more sergeant. So that would give us 22 SROs, count the WTC, and then, because, um, some of the conversation about pays, we're not sure where they are, um, with what they do with SROs, but that'll certainly start a run of negotiations with them, and then adding another sergeant. So that, column C, if you're C on top, um, that's the 25 officers that they talked about in addition to nine new officers. Okay, so that was the conversation they had this morning.
A small caveat, they did not give us the lieutenant's salary, so we just put in what the S, the sergeant made. Of course, it's a little bit more than that, or a lot more, I'm not sure, so, but we did our best to put that in. So, but we did our best to put that in.
So as we look at these figures in after our meeting today, do we want to give the superintendent some direction on how we want to proceed? My hope is that the negotiations will take place between the superintendent, the sheriff, and the county administrator would probably be a part of that, I'm not sure, but that there wouldn't necessarily be a need to have another meeting. I mean, we've had a good meeting with a lot of things discussed today. And still, it came down to wanting to know numbers, and here's some good numbers here. Do we want to look at, and we have an agenda item under Mr. Bradshaw's area, we can maybe go to that if we need to.
That was the purpose of having that.
Okay, right. So we could give direction. Ms. Hemel, what is your, what are your thoughts here?
I'd like to discuss money. Okay? Because I know someone was getting ready to ask me, well, how much money do we have? Okay, when you looked at one of the slides that Ms. Wilson put up there, the first calculation for safe schools was $310,915. The new money, which is obligated for all new officers, whether they're safe school officers or whether they're SRO officers, is $643,656. That money is obligated to go directly for the SRO program. So that gives us a total in that line item, $954,571, and you can see it on the screen if you memorize this. Out of that money, because out of our safe school money, we would have to deduct $50,595, which we have projected, but we've been told that some of these dollars may go up for the crossing guards. And I will remind the board that we are not obligated to pay for crossing guards. But we've always added those in the past because we felt like there was a few that we needed that the county and the cities weren't obligated to put out there. So we've done that in the past. And then $47,967 for security, which is our night security extracurricular events. So when you deduct that along with the now required administrative position that I must put in place by July 1, the safety specialist position, and we've taken the lowest supervisor position that we could take, and you deduct all of that out of our $954,000, the money we have left over in safe schools is $760,464.
Seven, six, zero?
Seven, six, yeah, seven, six, zero, four, sixty-four, and ninety-eight cents.
Ms. Wilson, can I ask you now?
Yes.
Where do we get more money that the state sends us for? No, I'm serious. I mean, do we get additional monies for funding of any of the safe schools, SROs, or other allocations?
No, only this is, that was the allocation that we're getting, so.
I do want to just say, Mr. Dodd, or Chairman Dodd, thank you this morning. You did an excellent job. That was, managing a meeting of that size is never easy, and you, I appreciate your leadership this morning on that. I think one of the things, though, that I continue to caution all of us with, and I think we're all largely at the same page, is I really don't like the idea, I don't like to be told by the state how to operate our schools. I have a thing about that. I think you may know that. And I know we're all on the same page on that, any more than our teachers like to be told exactly how to instruct every part of their classes. Ms. Hemel has a different opinion sometimes on that. No, I don't think that we want to go down the road of always telling our sheriff how to operate, making sure that our schools are covered. At the same time, we have an obligation now in statute under SB 7026 to cover those schools. And from what I think we've gotten, and I spent some time talking to FSBA today as well, is that we're talking about that 21 schools are obligated to be, to have SROs or school, what's the other term, Mr. Dodd?
School safety.
School safety officers there. So to me, the conversation goes back to that in previous years, and I'm going to go by last year, I believe we had 14 schools that really we covered. And when we covered those 14 schools, we subordinated our, largely our safe schools funding to about the range of about $360-something thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
This year, we're talking about 21 schools. And I think one of the ways that we should be looking at it is to say, I think you said $760,000 is the net, that we're talking about our ability to fund $760,000 for 21 schools, or about a $400,000 increase is what we would be able to contribute for that, for that higher level of service. But we are only increasing it by about 25 percent, the increased number of schools. In fact, if people are following where I'm going with that. So I still believe, though, rather than get into whether it's a sergeant, a lieutenant, whether we use a volunteer system, or whether the sheriff does, I just don't like the idea of us having those conversations. As much as I say the level of service that we are asking for is to have 21 schools covered, and this is the amount of money that we are saying to the superintendent we can allocate for that. And now, there can be conversations as to whether the sheriff wants to change some of the levels of service, or whether we must modify the levels of service that we've become accustomed to with the SROs, whether focus is handled through the SROs, the teachings, or whether that's something we take on. Those may, those, I think, are conversations that can be decided, but I still think we should be approaching this by school coverage and not by specific numbers of personnel. Because that's, you could manage that any number of ways, and it seems like, listening today, there was a lot of different opinions of how to accomplish that. That's difficult for us to do, and I don't think that we want to get into that. So I just think we should come back to that approach. So that's my thoughts.
So your thoughts are more for the first part of this?
I'm saying 20.
Rather than decisions?
No, I'm, instead of looking at it as SROs, I'm looking at it as schools. We have 21 schools that I believe have been identified as requiring a school resource officer, a school safety officer on those schools. Or, as I understand, in the letter of the law, I believe, is assigned to those schools. So I'm saying that the level of service we are really asking for is for that, not necessarily to how that is going to be managed. Because it's not necess, I mean, I know that typically a SRO is assigned to a school. But in any given day, he may manage that any number of ways. There may be a, you know, a lieutenant that's on there, a roving person. He may start looking and saying, listen, when I have to transport somebody, I'm going to bring a road deputy over there, transport that, and the SRO's there. I don't want to get into us telling him how to operate. So to me, if we instead look at it as a dollar funding, this is the pot of money, which is largely what we've done for these years. It just happened to be that we set the level of service previously at 14. Last year, it was 14 schools. The pot of money was 367, you know, or so thousand dollars, and that was the level of service. And now, I'm saying, well, the level of service is 21 schools instead of 14, and we have, you know, $760,000 that we can, instead of 367. Now, if, since we, I think, have all kind of in concepts said, right now, we are focused on SROs rather than the school guardian program at this moment, if we all, by, I think it's June 1st, July 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st? If it's still agreed that that money could then be utilized for some type of funding of SROs, that's more money that goes into the budget for him, not from us, because I believe that goes directly to the sheriff's office or through the Board of County Commission. So that would be, that would offset his costs on that. And I think we're agreeable to say we would prefer that to be used to first fund SROs. Does that make sense?
Well, at least what I'm thinking, at least what I express it. Yeah, it does. But on the other hand, if we're going to have 21 resource officers, we've got to realize they need supervision. And just because it's not at a school, they still need, they still need supervision. So that's what I'm kind of.
And here's my thing, I don't disagree with that. But what I'm saying is, in the past, we really, it seems like, didn't, I'm not sure how the contract read, but the reality was, we funded, we funded $360 or so thousand to cover 14 schools. We didn't necessarily, now, I believe the operations of that included a lieutenant and a sergeant, and I think they did other things too, because obviously, they still had sick time that took place, and they had other things that they managed that. They also managed it by, they didn't, there wasn't a man, you know, a law that says they had to have somebody there bell to bell. That is a question that, talking to FSBA, that is not clear that that is the case. I would agree that we have all said that is what we would all desire to take place. But, you know, for example, La Canto has arguably as many as five SROs assigned or would be assigned to schools within about 500 yards of each other. The, you know, I don't know if the intent would be to say that if somebody left Crest to go across the street to La Canto to take a call or to assist in a call, that we're saying that a road deputy needs to come right back to Crest to cover that. And I don't know that as a board member, I really want us having those conversations as to that. I respect that he may manage it, but those are management decisions he makes every day, and we didn't get into telling him how to do that.
But we do have a clear position by the school board attorney that we need to have an SRO or an officer at Crest, right? Mr. Bradshaw? That we need to have an SRO?
If you have somebody assigned there.
Assigned.
Assigned, though, is not the same.
That was a big discussion. It's a big discussion, it's not just a big discussion here, it is probably a small discussion compared to other counties that need 85 new SROs, you know, by August 1st, and they're never going to get it. So, you know, it's like to do the best you can. I think some of the confusion came out, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I think initially Governor Scott said what he wanted was an SRO on every campus from bell to bell. But that's not what came out of the legislature. The legislature says that the school boards and superintendents shall partner with law enforcement agency to assign, or I can't remember the other word, one or more safe school officers at each school, basically is what it said. So, you know, I think that, like I said earlier today, I think optimally, and what the best-case scenario is, is that you have a school resource officer or a safe school officer on every single campus all day long. But that's not what the law says. The law says assigned. It doesn't say from bell to bell or a minimum of eight hours or anything else. So, but there's a lot of question on how we, what happens with that. I feel I'm blessed that I don't have to make some hard decisions that other attorneys are going to make in other counties when they show up, when they add a 1 to 12 ratio or 1 to 10 ratio at primary schools, you know, what struggle they're going to go, because they're never going to come up with that pay.
Well, capital, you know, we talked, there's been talk about vehicles and about, you know, about cruisers. You know, the conversation from some of the other districts are, well, we're not paying for cruisers. And my question is, I don't want to tell the sheriff who he's letting have a cruiser, who's not. I understand they have, I think, a policy and they have a take-home car, and that's, and that is a decision made for the interest of our community. But that's a level of service that I'm saying, you know, if we're getting into those conversations, again, they, to me, take away from what is the school board's obligation under SB 7026. And the challenge we have, again, is this particular school board has been trying to get to a one-to-one with SROs, and I know it dates back to, I think, Mr. Dodd, when you even were serving, I mean, that's going to desire always to get to that. And I think one of the things of one of the previous sheriffs has indicated, that's one of the things he really wanted to get accomplished before he retired, and we just, you know, the funding hasn't been there. We now have $400,000 more funding this year than last year, and we have about 25 percent more schools that we need to cover. But $400,000 is almost double what we had last year. So we're talking about being able to provide double the funding for almost half as many schools.
Speaking of the number of schools, though, nobody jogged my memory, because I thought when we were talking about the nine additional officers, we had eliminated WTC because the academy and the presence of the deputies there at most times, and it's an adult school. I remember clearly one of those nine was going to be a coverage officer. He asked for two, we said one. So our third column saying 25, if we put one at WTC, and he still wants a coverage, then we're talking about 26.
Well, and this happened after you left on a good, um, meeting, but yeah, that, you clarified that after you left, that it would be put down as Lieutenant General College.
And that would be the coverage then.
But if they could work out, because we are going to have to pay school there, if they can work out, though, the other officers that are at WTC, assigned there, working in training or working in professional standards who are sworn officers, if the sheriff can work that out to cover that school with that presence, then possibly that would become a coverage officer. So, you know, what I'm, what I feel a bit uneasy about is that we did have a good meeting today, and we did have consensus on the 25 positions. And so, we had consensus? I know that they had consensus. I don't know that I ever heard us have consensus on that.
I figured if you didn't have numbers.
Yeah. I mean, that, to me, was a, was a...
We had consensus.
That was a question that we brought up. Where is this number? And what was then said by the Board of County Commissioners, until they see actual figures, the number of nine was meaningless, because they said, if it's too much, we're just going to say that's not going to cover it anyway. And my position that I continue to go is, we still have, however we get there, we still have 21 schools we are going to have to cover by law. How that's covered concerns me if we're getting into telling the sheriff his way of operating. We might have an entirely different way of operating if we were doing it, but we're not. We're to contract with a law enforcement agency.
Well, again, so out of these three plans, then, which one are you telling me, Mr. Kenny, that you agree with, or that you would prefer?
I'm saying that I, that, again, I've always said, it concerns me when we get into conversations of salary benefits and all of those pieces, because the question then becomes, as we talked about, I don't like the idea then us saying, well, then let's talk about everything else. Let's open the whole thing up. How much are we, are we subordinating for the use of WTC, for the use of our, for our other facilities? I don't want to start opening up our inter-local agreement conversations, going back and forth because of every dollar that we're trying to capture back and forth.
Well, I think...
We need to be prepared to deal with some of the...
I think, right, but if we look at this plan, at these three plans that the superintendent has presented to us, these are only salary and benefits. So there would be a kind of a capturing there, and we talked about it in the meeting, that the cost of what we allow the sheriff's office to have for free through locations at Lieutenant General College, office space, training space, the firing range, the opposite course right across the street here, those would offset the capital cost of maybe some of those things the sheriff has, the car, the equipment. So this plan, what we're seeing here does not...
And you're right, I think they should, but I don't know that I really heard that today.
Well, but what we're saying is, that's what these three plans are. That's, this is what we would say, that we agree that what is, those things are balanced and are out of picture. So we're only talking about salary and benefits. So I don't want to have to open up those discussions either on the generating sheet So I don't wanna have to open up those discussions either on the generating agreements. I don't wanna have to get into having to show every cost that we can charge the sheriff's office for.
Or the commission. Since everyone's funding it.
Well, that's... They're the ones that are gonna fund it. But, you know, one of the commissioners made it clear to you about the mandate.
Oh, I agree.
That this is a mandate that we have. So we've gotta realize that we've gotta do this together. We don't have the money to cover all the schools on our own. There's no way we can do that.
And that was why my thinking, again, if we look at past numbers of salaries only, it looked like, from what I had here that was published in the paper, because I'm going on what the sheriff supplied, he's saying 1.3 million is what he was saying for salaries and benefits, or he just has on there, was for last year for six SROs. And we funded about $367,000. And we're saying, though, well, that was for 14 schools. So now, we're saying, well, we've got another $400,000 that the state gave us, because that was all the state gave us. So when we get into the three scenarios that we're looking at here, again, they're kind of apples and oranges. Because I'm sitting there saying, okay, so they're going to supply this. I don't know where that level of service is. I mean, there's been conversations to say that the level of service... I don't know that I... I've heard two different things today, and maybe I'm wrong, as to, are we still talking about SROs or deputies on school campuses? And I say that because a deputy on a school campus may have school training. But you know better than me that that's different than what our SRO programs have been, which has been about education and relationships.
I only heard SROs, because I remember Sheriff Penegas putting a timeline on how long it would take him to complete that training by the time we were mandated to put them in classroom. So I feel confident that he's talking about an SRO in every...
They're referring to SROs, but there was no conversation as to what the duties within the schools of that would be. Does that mean focus is still gonna be going on? Does that mean that the different programs that we do and that have been developed by the sheriff's office?
No, I heard him say, specifically pertaining to focus, that Pogway Lieutenant and Sergeant, rather than having three SROs and two move from another school, that he would send in the lieutenant or the sergeant to help that SRO.
That typically one SRO would go into each of the classrooms.
Yeah.
Now we're talking... That's a different level of service.
She was saying that sometimes they had to move them because they wanted another SRO doing the focus program. Sometimes they were doing something that required three. That he wasn't gonna pull them anymore from their other schools. He was gonna use the administrators to cover, so he couldn't pull them. I'm sure that he's talking about SROs in every school. And I didn't see that he was gonna eliminate any programs that he had.
I think, Thomas, that's my... It was my impression, too, when we were talking about school resources.
I hope so. Because I'm not sure. There has been so much focus on the security level from having a presence there.
Right.
And I can... Again, we haven't had an amazing SRO program. And I... Because it's a true SRO program.
And what you're saying is, you don't want these positions just to be security guard-type positions.
Yes.
You want these positions to have the classroom and the counseling.
Absolutely.
And I agree with you 100% of that. And I think that's what they're gonna do.
Well, I would tell you all that I did have Mr. Hebert today talk to all the elementary school principals. Because when I heard that they had three SROs on one campus teaching focus in one classroom, as Walter said, that gave us a concern at the district level, because, you know, again, whether we want to talk about funding or not, it's about funding. And if we're having to hire coverage officers to cover, to go help with the focus program and those types of things, we, as a district in the elementary world, principals talk about different avenues to deliver those concepts or focus program, those kind of things. So as we go through this, now, we're talking July 1st. We're not talking current school year. Then we would go back and look at what some decisions have been made. Duke can give how much money, how many officers we can put out there, and then we can move forward from that. And I'm not saying we're doing it. We're just saying it's an option that we're gonna put on the table with our elementary principals.
Well, let me... And Tom, Thomas, you go first.
Yeah, you go.
Okay. So let me present my idea. You know, I did... My agreement, or what I saw was for the nine officers, which is the third plan here for 25 total. But I also talked about having not a true 50-50, but looking at a difference in costs, in cost share, that, you know, I felt like the supervision issue that the sheriff has, the fact that they are his... That's his manpower. Yes, sir, you're right.
I'm just... I don't wanna lose your thought.
No, no. So those are things that I felt like would be better served if we did a 40-60, or even I did talk about a 45-55.
Hey, come back... You tried a lot.
I am gonna come back to that. But we are... Thank you, Mr. Kenny, for recognizing that. We are under a time certain for citizen comments. It is 515. And we do have one green form, Victoria Smith, and topics. She has written down here, it's due at this one. So Ms. Smith, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Dodd and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and School Board. Last time I was here, I talked about how in the elementary schools, the students are being more violent, and how they're misbehaving, rapid speed, and different than what they used to. And I know that there are means being done to help change that. I know that we have behavior to assess. I know that we don't have enough. I know that a lot of them are not completely trained yet in the way that perhaps they could have better training. But my concern now, that's been coming up quite a bit... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Victoria Smith, Settlers County Education Association President. Sorry. My concern that I have found now is that teachers are being recommended not to put in anything in Skyward for discipline issues. And I think there needs to be some, I don't know, across the board, something going on, perhaps a policy or something, to... That way, every principal, every school is understanding what they're supposed to do for students' discipline. It's my understanding that they don't want to have any negative referrals in Skyward. But then, what's happening, first of all, the student is not held accountable, which is a problem. And then, second of all, teachers have no way of showing, you know, that this student has been a problem. And then, if something comes up, something bad happens, and they have no way of showing that they've had problems with this child. This is happening not just at elementary schools, but also in middle schools. And my concern is that now with all the safety, the SROs that we have to have, because if everything's happening, we need to hold our students a little bit more accountable at such a young age as well, not just in the high school level. I'm not saying that it's, you know, we wanna put all the students in ISS or OSS and have problems with them. But we do need to, you know, definitely do something where the teachers, first of all, can manage their classroom as is stated in Florida statute, but also that, you know, the students are held accountable. So, thank you.
Ms. Smith, do you have specifics on that? Because if so, would you do it with Miss... How well I remember?
Yes, I will. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
You know, Ms. Kit Humble's here. And I meant to have us congratulate her. We had you on the consent agenda. And congratulations. Thank you for willing to be here and step forward.
Thank you.
Would you like to step up to the mic or not? Okay.
I hear y'all have had a long day.
Oh, we have another green card?
Yes, however, I didn't have a pen to fill mine out.
Okay, come on down, and we'll give you a pen, and you can just fill it out.
Yeah, I'll fill it out.
When you're done. That's fine.
Good evening. I'm Linda Stegler from Crest School. And I had the privilege of being there this morning to watch the BOCC meeting. And I'd rather be in a classroom than in your meetings. My gosh, they are so long. And I had to leave, because I had to go back to class. But I understand Mr. Bradshaw's explanation of the assist-assigned part for the SROs. However, Crest School does need their individual school SRO. And we already have one which is assigned. Am I not coming through? We already have an SRO which is assigned. He's also assigned to La Canto Middle School. And he's assigned also to Renaissance, SRMI. So we did have a situation a couple days ago where 911 was called. And it took the officer almost 10 minutes just to respond on the radio. So apparently, he must have had already another situation that he was dealing with before he even go on the radio. So, thank God, we didn't need him ASAP at that time, because whichever school that he was assigned to, he'd have to run out of that school, get to the patrol car, start the car, go around the whole complex of La Canto, because Crest School is in the back where we practice WTC and the police officers. Then get out of his car, try to get into the school, because the school is on lockdown 24/7 from the outside. So if we would have our own SRO on campus, that would be greatly appreciated. And they are a good role model for our students to be there. And I appreciate it.
And I just wanna address something you said. When you said Mr. Bradshaw talked about the assigned officer, he was just reading what the law says?
From 7026, yes.
Because I would say Mr. Bradshaw's probably the first one between everyone involved, whether it's us, sheriff's office, Board of County, who told us Chris had to have their own SRO. He was the first one to tell us that.
So can we... Is that, like, within stone?
And you look at that term. We've included you with every conversation we've had since.
And I did. And I did go back to school, and I did mention thank you to Mrs. Hemmels, because you must have mentioned us, like, four times in your meeting. I'm like, yes, yes, yes. But I appreciate it. And if, please, Chris, your own SRO.
I want your pen.
Okay.
And Mr. Bradshaw, when now they're talking assigned, it's different than what we had assigned before. If we had one, sometimes one SRO assigned to multiple schools, I believe now the intent is that you would have one specific assigned to one school.
Yes.
Which is different than the way we've operated in...
Yes. And then the argument gets into, do they have to be there from bell-to-bell?
Right. But the answer is, is they do have to... The assignment can't be shared, is I think the intent of that, that you can't have a shared assignment.
And I think that what I'm remembering back in the day was that our SROs had a relationship with our students.
And that keeps our schools safe.
It does. It does keep ours safe.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, we're gonna move back into our discussion here. I was making a point on my preference here for the third column. And, you know, I was talking a little bit about the cost of the benefit of supervision, which obviously is the direct supervision the sheriff has over the 25 individuals that are assigned as... That are assigned to the school resource officer program as listed here. And that obviously should pull a little more weight. So even if we looked at a 45-55 mixture, when I take the $1,949,000 and multiply that by 45%, that comes up to $877,315. And Ms. Wilson, I know I see you working on your calculator there. If you could just double-check that for me. The third column at 45%, I came up with $877,315. Did I do that right? Eight seven seven three fifteen. Now, what Ms. Hemmel has given us is that we have an availability of $760,464. So that leaves $116,851 that would still have to be covered. And that is a large amount of money, and we want to protect our reserves. But I do see that there is a need here. And I think in good faith, I would feel better after our meeting today with pursuing that option of the 25 positions at a 45-55 negotiated, you know, cost, 45% to the district. And then we would have to look at a way to meet the $116,000, almost $117,000 extra dollars. Now, that's for the first year. I also had discussed a little bit about just having a flat fee that we pay for school resource officers. And Mr. Kenny, if you wanted to look at that way...
That's really what I'm trying to say. I'm sorry.
We could have, you know, if we could work out a flat fee that we would pay, it would make it very simple for accounting purposes. And everyone in budgeting would know this amount of money is gonna be paid for every school resource officer, whether they're a supervisor or not. We're gonna pay $35,000 per position, or whatever that amount would be. But I think we have to realize that, as a result of that meeting today, I don't think we're gonna be able to give them this pot of money and then give us 25 officers. I think we're gonna have to find some more money in order to cover all the bases, all the schools with resource officers. You know, I mean, after we negotiated, I mean, it was a, you know, it was... You know, there's a lot of great discussion, but we didn't come out of there with an answer. So, you know, they wanna crunch the numbers. And I think that could be a good option for me, to crunch the numbers and look at those 25 positions. Ms. Council?
I'm just looking at if this calculation that Tammy's done is just the salaries and the benefits. I heard a lot of implications that they wanted more than salary and...
Salary.
Yeah. And so, I'm thinking that if we think right now, I think we need to really talk about it. But I think it's gonna be a lot more than $116,000, from what I heard today. Unless we really... We're gonna have a hard time in July, I think.
And Mr. Dodd, that's why I think while your numbers of what you're coming up with, and I understand you're kind of looking at a level which I value, by the way. I don't want you to think that. I feel like you're saying, okay, so this is... I think we are all on the same page as far as saying, listen, we're gonna have to spend this amount of money to get this amount of service. But I'm not sure that all of those parties were on the same page about what that's gonna cover.
But I think these figures are the ones that we should be working with. And we should be paying salaries and benefits. We should be paying for car radios and antennas and all that other long list that I heard. You know, if we hire somebody in our school employees, you know, we provide our teachers with textbooks. You'd be surprised what they pay if you're their job. You know, and so I'm just saying that I don't wanna get a little Pollyannaish and look at these figures, and then we come up to budget in July, and all of a sudden, the $116,000 turns into $516,000, because they want us to cover all these other expenses that an SRO has. And I think this is very reasonable that we cover 45% of their salaries and their FBS.
Do you think it's reasonable for the 25?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm going for the 25, as long as we've got that... I don't wanna see 26, because we...
No, I agree.
...to see a coverage. But I'm just... I don't wanna have any surprises from what I heard today, because I heard that maybe we needed a lot more than just to pay these guys. And I don't think that's part of our job. We were mandated to put it there. And I like what Thomas said. How they do it with the money that we give them is up to them. And if they have more needs to supply the radios and cars and stuff like that, I don't think we should supply a brand-new vehicle and outfit for $60,000 just to say we're gonna hire an SRO.
Well, and that's why this plan would account, again, for what we offer on the one end with the Gutech technical college versus what they would offer with the patrol vehicle and the equipment.
And I don't wanna leave this meeting saying that we're looking at maybe $116,000 and then have to draw a line in the sand in July when we start talking about the budget, and they want more than salaries and benefits.
Well, they're gonna have a meeting, second Tuesday in May. Was it what it was?
May.
Oh, I'm sorry. May 8th. Yeah, second Tuesday in May, May 8th. And so they've asked for the superintendent and the sheriff to kind of come together on the direction of the nine positions. And I certainly would like to pursue that with, you know, considering the amount of money we have and considering this. This is a negotiation that I think I'd be hard-pressed to leave here today and say, "Well, we changed our mind from this morning." And I respect your call, Mr. Kenny. You know, we didn't vote on anything. We didn't have, you know... I mean, I agreed with the nine. And I think that covers the base, because I... And I think that covers the base because I want an officer at AES, I want an officer at Crest, and I want an officer with La Kucha Technical College. And I also recognize with, with the amount of new officers coming in, supervision should be included in that.
But I, okay.
Okay, at 5:30, public hearing, okay, very good. So we will, we'll come back to this discussion again, but we do have a public hearing at 5:30. So we will go to that. That's back on page one of the agenda. Okay. So I'm going to recess our regular meeting and I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Dixon's here.
Yes, good afternoon, board members. I have some policy final public hearings as well as the attendance boundaries this evening. The first item is Policy 3.60 Flag Display Pledge and National Anthem. If you recall, this one came back to, uh, we wanted some additional language after the workshop. That language has been added. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Board members, any questions? All right, is there any public comment on A, the revision of Policy 3.60? Any public comment?
The only question I had on that is I know.
Hold on a second. Hold on, Ms. Council, I want to give you a word, Council. Is there any, any public comment in regards to revision of Policy 3.60? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Council.
I just thought in the last sentence in Part 2, student found out that distributed all student shell containers, notification, student has the right not to participate in receding. And I just had some under what circumstances, or they just say they don't want to do it. I know it's attached to my, my money. They don't have to, it doesn't, no reason or anything like that. So just, they can say, I'm not going to do it, put it in writing and, okay. I just want our teachers to cover it because I, I always feared when they were doing this that I didn't want a teacher put in a position where they said you have to stand or you have to say. And then I had, we had a problem with a teacher being attacked for not understanding, so.
All right, Ms. Council had a good question, but is there any other public comment? I'm going to ask that one more time. Public comment on this policy revision, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the next one.
The next one is Policy 5.20 Student Assignment. This one is being modified pursuant to legislative changes in House Bill 7029 in 2016. And the new language has been inserted in our policy on student assignment to address those provisions, which we're already doing.
All right, board, is there any comments we have on that? B, all right, is there any public comment to approve revision of Policy 5.20 Student Assignment? Move anyone wishing to speak on the revision of Policy 5.20? Last call, any public comment on Policy 5.20 Student Assignment? Okay.
The next one is Related Policy. It's actually a new policy, 5.201 regarding student out-of-zone transfers and school choice. This new language is also pursuant to House Bill 7029 in 2016. And this is, this information is also included in our annual controlled enrollment, which is posted on the air desk.
All right, board members, any questions about that? Comments? Okay, is there any public comment to approve adopt the new Policy 5.20, 5.201 Student Out-of-Zone Transfers Choice? Would anyone like to speak on Item C, approve adopt the new Policy 5.201? Final call, anyone like to have public comment to adopt, to approve adopt the new Policy 5.201 Student Out-of-Zone Transfers? Okay, you can go to the next one.
The next one is 6.41 Instructional Employee Performance Criteria. This one is an addition of a citation-only rule calculations of student learning growth for use in school personnel evaluations. Added.
Board members, any questions, comments? Is there any public comment, Item D, approve revision of Policy 6.41 Instructional Employee Performance Criteria? Would anyone like to speak, Item D, approve revision of Policy 6.41? Last call, is there anyone here to speak on Item D, approve revision of Policy 6.41 Instructional Employee Performance Criteria? Okay, move to the next one.
And the final policy is Staff Training 6.70. The policy has been revised to add Section 3, C and G, and citations 100 of 6.07 and 102.583 regarding sexual harassment, suicide awareness and prevention.
Any questions, comments from board members? Any public comment on Item E, approve revision of Policy 6.70 Staff Training that Mr. Dixon just explained? Okay. If you would, please state your name again.
Victoria Smith, Centrus County Education Association President. I'm not sure if this is, if I should ask this or not, but I'm hoping, because it's not for the change for C or G, but instead it's mainly for A, identifying and reporting child abuse and neglect, and also F, code of ethics and professional standards. I know that at the new teacher orientation, we always have these all presented to everyone, but I really think there needs to be, I mean, I'm not one for more training, but there really needs to be one more training on A and F for our teachers and support throughout the year and not just at the very beginning for the new teachers because that is a growing issue.
Instead of just recurring notches.
Exactly.
And when we have those trainings, right, I want to. Just kidding. Just kidding.
Okay, I'm going to go back to my agenda here and ask for more public comment in reference to approving the revision of Policy 6.70 Staff Training. Is there any other, anyone else would like to speak on the revision of Policy 6.70 Staff Training? All right, last call, anyone to speak on the revision of Policy 6.70? Okay.
Okay. That concludes the policy changes. The final item is the annual review of the attendance boundaries. And I've included with your backup material, the annual report from the last reporting day in December for 2017. We're not recommending any changes to the attendance boundaries. I would like to re-adopt them, but would note in the report that, and just, the main trend that I see that's of interest is that the elementary enrollment has grown by 245 students since the end of December, which is, you know, a pretty hefty number. The high school and middle school enrollment is not that alarming, but the elementary school enrollment is. So we're going to go ahead and start the process of looking at that and seeing what kind of changes might be needed after the next, start of the next year to see if we need to do anything about that. And with that, I would recommend that you re-adopt the attendance boundaries for elementary, middle and high.
Yes.
I would suggest that you're going to do a lot of policies.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that. Is there any comments about the attendance, attendance boundaries? Any comments? Okay, is there any public input or comment in regards to Item F, approve attendance boundary maps from 2018, 2019 school year? Would anyone like to speak to Item F, approve attendance boundary maps? Last call, would anyone like to speak to approve attendance boundary maps for 2018, 2019 school year? Okay, seeing none. At this time, Mr. Bradshaw advised to, we do the policies in a one motion and the boundary map in a second motion, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve A through E.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Items A through E on policy adoptions or and/or revisions that we have just went over. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 4 to 0.
Approve attendance boundary map for 2018, 2019 school year, same bounty, attendance boundaries as 2017, 2018.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Item F, the attendance boundary maps from 2018, 2019 school year, same attendance boundaries as 2017, 2018. Are there any comments on that? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay, so we're going to go back now to our SRO discussion.
Mr. Doug, if I can just, because I think, I'm, I apologize. I think, I feel like I'm saying the same thing to you in a meeting, I'm agreeing. I'm trying to, I'm really agreeing with you.
Okay.
What I'm saying is I, I, what I, I keep continuing, I guess today, what concerned me about the whole number of SROs was it was almost a meaningless number because it didn't talk about coverage of our schools, of the specific schools. It did, but it also talked about how it was going to be done. And all I mean is, is that I agree kind of with the formulas or the, where you're kind of, how you're getting to a number. Because, and I, and I understand, you're saying, listen, that's, that number is really would buy this kind of service or these people. But what I'm saying is, is if we refer to it as almost a per-school basis right now or divided by the schools, it, there may be that he puts two lieutenants instead of a sergeant. He may two, you know, he may look at a multitude, a matrix of how he's going to accomplish the day-to-day operations. And I'm just saying, rather than that, let's just tell, we instead just tell them the schools like you're referencing of doing. And let's say that includes WTC. And we just say, these are the schools, this is the pot of money. And the reason why I say that is because I do think this is going to go back and forth at times about, well, what's that going to cover, what's that going to buy? Well, the trouble is unless we are all decided we're going to operate, and that includes the Board of County Commission, of how to tell him how to operate, he may find cost-effective ways of operating and achieving the goals of coverages of those schools along the year and, you know, in different ways. I'm, I also hope that we're able to, you know, provide, or that the state provides him the funding from the Guardian program that would offset those costs as well. I'm just saying that what our expectation as a school board is, we want these schools covered. And what does that look like as far as the service and level of service at those schools? How he goes about it is where I'm just saying, whether he does it with, in seven or he does it with 11, I'm good with that. If he can do it, if he finds that he's accomplishing that with seven, eight or nine. Or he says, listen, the reality is we've got 11 or 12 or however he sees that, and then next year, if we're getting more funding and we can talk to the state to continue to increase our safe schools funding, we need to do that because I don't think I have to convince this board. I don't think one SRO at the level of service that they're looking to provide for a high school, I'm hoping that we expand that at some point. And I'm hoping the state recognizes, the governor indicated that already. I'm hoping that we increase that. But I, we can't do that until we get to at least a one-to-one. And, and that's the only thing. So all I mean is, it's not that I disagree with saying whether we agreed with the nine or not. My feeling is we better cover these schools. And, and if it's 22 schools, then we have to cover those. And again, it's 21, I think if we don't include WTC, it sounds like it's 22 if we include WTC. That to me is a fair conversation of that. I just think we want to, I, I'm wondering if we should step back as to what that looks like as far as the details of the number of SROs, officers, rovers, all of those things. Because that's to me, operations. And I didn't think boards, we wanted to get into operations.
Well, yeah, but we don't get into operations, we're getting into funding.
I, well, and that's why I'm saying, so let's give him a, let's give him a number to fund.
And we have to assume that he's going to follow the mandate, no school in Centrus County is going to have an SRO officer. And he implied today that he would use his sergeants and attendants for coverage if necessary. So I don't, I wouldn't question that he fully intended to reach the mandate. But they did say that we were the ones who were mandated, not them.
That's not what the law said.
That's not what the law said. So I, I don't think we have to worry about it. And to say the truth, how he does it, he's, he's the expert in that area.
So you want us to put it on the Board of County Commissioners to fund the positions that the sheriff has requested with us just giving him an additional or just giving him $760,000?
I, I don't know. Have we ever had a conversation that I can recall since we've been on the board that we said, listen, we've got 14 schools, we're covering this, you're covering this? I don't think he's, that the sheriff's office has ever gone and had to have that conversation. So I'm trying to figure out why this is changed now. All we're doing is increasing the number of schools that need to be covered.
And today they changed that motion and said about the nine officers, now go see if you can fund it. Basically, they said, you know, remember they had the motion, then they had to change the motion to go back and say, see if the board, I want to take the sheriff's money, go back and do the same thing.
Yeah, and we've done it with column three here. So, column three, we're, that's.
And you all have to decide if we can afford column three.
Yeah.
If that's what we want to go back.
And Doug, your figure says we've got to find 116,000.
Well, now, there's a couple of things here. One is they have the sergeant and lieutenant pay is the same, so there could be a little additional amount there. But I think negotiation-wise, there is a good reason to have a 45-55. I mean, I tried to look at the 40-60 and look at days of, you know, when they're needed, but I understand that that doesn't, there's a lot of people that don't agree with that. And it's not a 10-month contract. I understand that. So I'm willing to give up that, but I'm not, I'm not, I don't see it as a 50-50. I see it as the power of the, the manpower issue is under the auspices of the sheriff and he can use those officers in a lot of ways that Mrs. Himmel can't. So a true 50-50 would allow the superintendent to be able to sign deputies saying, I want you to go work this a bit. And we don't have that authority. That's, that's up to the sheriff. So I, that's why I thought the 45% 55 is a good way to go with the figure that I think from what Mr. Kennedy said, we all agree we need 22, cover 22 schools. Is that right? But are you saying that you don't agree with the supervision then?
No, I'm saying that, that, I, I'm saying that, that I'm sure it does require supervision, but so does covering 14. And right now, he's doing, he's determined right now that that's a supervision of including two other officers. For, I'm almost kind of hearing, I mean, we didn't have any roving officers previously to that too because of the way they managed it. Just like now, there is a matrix way that they, that they may look at managing things, whether it's Baker Act, you know, transporting, whether it's arrest transporting, whether that is when someone comes off, how they're going to use a road deputy, all of those factors. The other one that, that I know that's been a serious conversation is the use of retired law enforcement. And I know I have been contacted by several former law enforcement officers that are saying, I'm going to other counties to get duty to do that. I don't want to tell him how to do those things, but all of those things factor into the way he decides to operate. I just don't think that our board wants to get into telling them how it should look. He may say that, you know, just like today when, I mean, there's discussions of whether it's nine, I think at one time there was 10, and, and there was conversations of that. And I'm just saying, maybe it is 10.
Well, but the sheriff did come off the coverage officers because he wanted four at one time, wasn't that right?
He meant the other day that he was at four coverage officers and three sergeants. I don't know what was going to happen with.
he decides to operate. I just don't think that our board wants to get into telling him how it should look. He may say that, you know, just like today, when, I mean, there's discussions of whether it's nine, I think at one time there was 10, and, and there was conversations of that, and I'm just saying, maybe it is 10.
Well, but the sheriff did come off the coverage officers, because he wanted four at one time, wasn't that right?
He meant the other day that he was at four coverage officers and three sergeants. I don't know what was gonna happen with the lieutenant, if he would've stayed in the program, but we were told that the lieutenant only worked, has about one-third of his responsibility is with the SROs.
And, and that would be another, another topic to negotiate, if the lieutenant is not full-time as an SRO supervisor, then that would allow first, maybe for this savings or even maybe more than that.
And, and that's like, you know, we also have summer schools, you know, like you still talked about the one.
Superintendent brought that up.
I know the one, the 180, I don't think 180 is necessarily, and that's what again concerns me, what is that 180? There's, you know, one concern I have, and I know I kind of touched on it today, I think that the, the fifth grade Washington DC trip is a big deal. It is a big deal, I think it's a big deal, not just culturally, but because of the impact it has with young people in their lives, which is what the relationship building that we always talk about, there's a cost to that. And, you know, I don't even know how you would factor in some of those things, because there's a huge amount of manpower that goes into those.
Well, yeah, and I didn't share this with the group, but my, my formula for how I came up with the 60-40 was based on the, a 52-week year with 180 school days, 10 training days, and 20 vacation sick holidays, came up 210 total days. When you look at that as a percentage, that's right, 40%, a little over 40% or 40.3, I think we're at. And that's what gave me my formula for 40-60. That, I don't, yeah, nobody really liked that idea, or a couple of commissioners didn't.
We didn't wanna.
Yeah, we did, but again, I still think there's an argument for that, you know, not a 50-50. So, I'm just trying to give the superintendent some guidance, because there is a little bit of a time crunch here with how we gotta proceed, because I, we took the lead on the five right off, right out the gate, and there's not been a decision on the sheriff's budget now for the five, but we made a decision that we would fund 50%, and that was $96,000. And now, now that's gonna be the May, May eighth. But, on the other hand, I think that if we look at what the general perception from the meeting I got is that the county commissioner wants us to pay a whole lot more money than we have.
And, and I think we are, we're already talking about almost double of what we paid in the past. Now, and, and that's why I say, Chairman, I agree, I think that from the numbers, how it works out, whether it's what percentage, I think we're almost kind of coming up with a number at the end of the day, because whether you say it's 45% of column three here, or whether I'm saying, okay, and that, which is, say, 800 and something thousand dollars, or we just say, here's 800 and something thousand dollars, go cover those schools. I, I think the number-wise, we're still talking the same thing. I just don't, I don't really, again, if we start getting into telling him how to, to do their job, you, you certainly have an authority board that's willing to do that.
I don't see the percentages as much as how they do their job. I think, I agree with your percentages, because we have teachers that work well into the summer, and we don't pay them, we pay them for 196 days.
Well, you know, if you wanna do some real quick math, you take 25 officers at around, at an average price of $100,000 an officer, it's 2.5 million. The way it was presented, they want us to pay half of that, which would be 1.25 million dollars. And now, that's what they could present, and, you know, what I'm offering here is, let's present this where it would cost us about $117,000 more than what we're receiving. So, you know, that's just, I mean, I can certainly say that I support 25, I don't know if the board wants to say that, but I was trying to help the superintendent with negotiations.
I can support the same dollar amount that you're saying. I'm just saying, I don't feel that I need to, we need to tell them how it looks.
Okay.
That's really all I'm saying. I can support the dollar amounts, and I'm just saying, that's really where I'm at. What is, is it really important that we say how it looks?
Right. So, my percentage was 877,315, wasn't that right, Ms. Wilson? So, you're, so Thomas, you're saying you could support that amount that we would pay, but you don't wanna be the one telling them?
I don't wanna tell them how to do it, but I think it, it helps for our board to say, this is what our rationale is.
Yeah.
Because we're saying, listen, we agree that, that that probably is gonna be 25 personnel, and that's where we're coming in, that's fine. I think at the end of the day, no matter how we come up with a number, there, no one's gonna agree. They're gonna say, if it's 25, well, really, it's not 25, it's 20, it's 27, and that means we're gonna do this and this. And I'm just still, at the end of the day, saying, this is the pot of money, these are the schools that have to be covered. So, I, I mean, that, I mean, I don't know, I, I agree with the number you're trying to get to, that part I can, I do. And it, but that's the only thing I'm saying, is it's, it's the schools have got to be covered, and we want SROs.
I don't want the trip to Washington.
We want the trip to Washington.
So, right, and so, we all, we all agree then, that we're not looking for, you know, we're looking for a full-year position, but, but do you agree with my philosophy of, you know, 45-55, or do you think we don't even tell them that?
I, I just go back to the dollar amount, because I just think that depending on how somebody promotes it to the different parties, I mean, just like you did a second ago with the, because I agree, because I've done that same thing, about 2.5, and I'm thinking, well, then, nays. I heard a comment today that said, well, we're gonna take safe schools, and we're just gonna throw that into the pot, and then we're gonna still divide it by two. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, none of these numbers are entirely clear. So, I'm saying is, this, if, if the money that we are, we can say, listen, safe schools is providing us this, we still have to fund this, we're, we can come to the table with this. You know what? The sheriff, I'm hoping, will sit there and say, well, listen, this is how I would make that work, and this is how I'll probably make it look then. And maybe he will look at some of those suggestions that have been brought up today.
And we would come to the table with that amount of money to fund 25 employees.
I have no problem entertaining a motion today.
And it may, may not be 40 or 45.
And if the chairman wants to make that motion, I would entertain it.
All right. Let me, Ms. Bryant had raised her hand, so.
She did, she raised her hand.
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
If you feel compelled to explain this to him, explain away. I don't care, but I agree with Tom, this is the money we have, bound, to fund 25.
Well, I wish you would've been in the meetings.
But I, but I'm, I want your calculations, and the money that we offer them for 25 people will be your 40 or 45% of, of the money. We're not gonna pay the 50-50, that's not, that's just not fair. I'm looking at the amount of money we're paying for an SRO, and I'm looking at the money we pay a teacher to work almost all year long, sometimes 12 and 15 hours a day if they're in other things, and what we're paying for SROs. And I don't want our teachers any more angrier than they are already.
And did you see the teacher came over to your, to support this little girl? I mean, yeah. We pay him to do that.
Mr. Dodd, I think he came up with a number of 800 and what?
I came up with a number of 877,315, which is, which is 45%.
I'm just going round numbers, it's about 100,000 more than I think the superintendent.
116,000.
116,000.
116.
116,000 more than the 760.
We are, we will still have to be building somewhere in a budget where, by the way, just as a reminder to all of us, I know you know this, we got a whole 47 cents more per student, um, per year, so we've got about $7,500, so we can throw that onto there.
I told the commissioner I was sitting next to that they gave us 47 cents a student, it didn't seem to make any impact.
Yeah, now, so that, I'm just saying on that, I would be, I, I would certainly be agreeable to say, you know, maybe just for round numbers, that it's, we're talking about $850,000, and saying, I'm sorry?
And start there.
And start there, and say, 22 schools, $850,000, and the level of services we've, we've all articulated today. If he can do that with 25, if he can do that with whatever, however that looks like. The other thing that we, you and I know that isn't here is, the year's of service. I mean, if I, if I have a young administrator, they're a lot less expensive to us than, you know, in operating a school, than when I have someone who's more seasoned. So, those are factors that we just kind of average in, in those costs.
Well, now, we do have another thing that the superintendent brought up with the crossing guards, that could be something to look at, that we are paying over $50,000 a year on school crossing guards, that we are not required by law to pay for, is that correct? Mr. Bradshaw, too, you understand?
Crossing guards, stuff like, sort of, cities and the county's, I think we have asked for additional ones for areas of high traffic, where crossing guard does not have to be, by law, there doesn't have to be one, but I think where middle school road, when that comes down, I think you have to have a crossing guard there, but no bus would ever get out, a car would ever turn, because we didn't have something there, so.
Will we hire the crossing guard, or no?
It's going to the sheriff's office.
They train them.
I mean, you could put it part of a package and just say it's 900,000, including the crossing guards, I mean, it really is kind of, either way, it means, you know, but whether you take it out or put it in, it goes part of the package.
You also need to check to make sure that there's a healthy line item on certain packages.
And they may be, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, you know, it.
Ms. Wilson, gave her, you know.
Yeah, I mean, sorry.
No, we, we happen to have, we live in, survive in a community of total volunteers, and we have a lot of retired people that, with that experience, that might wanna just say, they'll do it because they wanna watch those buses cross those roads safe.
Well, that's true, I think the problem that they have is finding the right people who will do it, who are training, and will show up.
Yeah, but the crossing guards only take care of the buses, and I've heard people that, that complained, that, well, they didn't let me, they didn't get out there and stop the traffic, so I could cross.
It's hard to hire a crossing guard, they only work a couple hours here and a couple hours later in the afternoon, it's just hard to keep them.
Yeah.
And Mr. Dodd, I think you, I, you, you did, I think, and I think Commissioner Coleman tried to remind us, that the sheriff's comment, which is correct, that there is a lead time in doing this, and they can't just like flip a switch and all of a sudden there's immediately SROs there. They have, they have lead times in both directions. And so, however he has to do this, I, I agree, I don't want us to keep being, I don't want us to be a stumbling block, I don't think we've been, I don't want us to be, I would like for this to move forward, and move forward in a.
Does that mean we need to vote?
Well, hold on, I mean, 'cause I wanted to, I mean, we could have a motion on this, it is on the agenda, but, you know, again, I think if we show good faith and a plan, not just throw out a figure of 850 or 900,000, I think if we, if we give a figure that can be justified, that would be my preference to go. And that would be, you know, back to my 877,000. And we could say, this is what the board agrees with now, and leave the school crossing guards on the table for the superintendent to discuss, not going either way on the school crossing guards. Because we know that if, you know, there could be a lot of upset people now, if now there's no more crossing guard at a certain location, and obviously, there would be a lot of finger pointing, and probably a lot of those would come back to us. I mean, the reality of it is that, you know, we want safe schools, we want parents to be able to get in and out of campuses safely and as quickly as possible, our buses to get on the road. So, I don't wanna get into a, a big argument about those things, so, but it's something we have to consider. I mean, and I know we've talked about the costs for, for extra duty details, I mean, we're spending in the neighborhood $50,000 a year for those things, too. I don't think we can get away from that, though, because of the, of the need for those, for safety at those extra critical activities, so, so, Mr. President.
We don't, we don't necessarily need a motion, we don't want them to all tell us.
Okay.
We need a motion on, honey, you decide, on your, when you go back. Yeah.
So, are.
And I just wanna inform you all too, with the business after now.
It's all canny's, oh.
Ms. Cernitz has been in contact with.
For Ms. Wilson.
Security companies who have sworn officers, if we can't meet the needs of what we do with the amount of money we have, to look at alternatives for night security, maybe extra coverage, and things, so, we should get those numbers and bring those back to you all at some point, but at least we can get started here, and then we'll know what kind of dollars.
I think this is an excellent start, I only expect this today, because, thank you very much, though, Kami, I really mean it.
And Mr. Dodd, I, I think you're right, that's why I say, I don't wanna, we, I think we are all on the same, large, same page, it's just really about how we're getting to the number that we're getting to.
Why, the numbers seem to be important this morning, so I like your attaching, where this is, you asked 25 people here, 25 people, this is game on, we can.
Right, okay, so, you heard our, our comments on that, and how we can move forward.
But we are talking about schools, because again, that's, that's the most important thing, is that we are talking about those 22 schools, it looks like that we're referring to, and how it looks, you guys can talk about.
But the focus this morning was on a number of people.
And the sheriff did relate to the issue of the coverage officers, I mean, to have supervisors act as coverage, because we do want a deputy on campus. And I know, Mr. Bradshaw, I talked about the bill of the bell, and whether or not the law applies, but I think we all agree that if, if the officer's gonna be off campus for any time, we're gonna have to have another person there to cover. And so, we're all on the same page there, too. So, we can pursue, you can pursue with 25 positions, and, and I guess we will move the sheriff.
Well, and I don't think it's my place to tell the sheriff to put these people.
Well, that, that's really where I go back to again.
I mean, I can say that, you know, you all work with the numbers, based on 25 staff, and that here's a dollar amount, and then they can do that. I mean, I know he's gonna meet the letter of the law, I guess.
I just think there's a lot of ways he may decide to get to it.
He may want to restart, so, lieutenant, he may want nobody at WTC, but we try to figure out how to do one without WTC, so, but I know that this would.
Well, it's not things for a reserve deputy program.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
It's not that they would be without, they would just meet the need by individuals already there, so, we don't want WTC to feel that they're gonna be overlooked without an officer.
But the sheriff could say today that there's times when they're training in other things, that there's no one there, so, it may work out that this person is WTC.
Plus, that's an adult school, we're not talking about elementary, middle, high school, but we do have high school kids. But we have some high school kids there.
An adult, but never.
Just sort of qualify the schools.
Yeah, but.
Because the law doesn't say what age they are, they say students.
Yeah.
Or school.
Okay, all right, so I think we've given the superintendent some direction to go with, and, you know, to work with the sheriff and the county judiciary, or come up with those, crushing up the numbers as they say.
And when we talked this morning about recurring dollars, I know in the law, that's 654,000 pieces in there, but you all know the legislators can change the law next year in Hartford, so, this will be something that we'll have to negotiate over here, which we have in the past.
I do think we've got to talk to our legislators, too, and say, this, this is a tough position we're being put into. And, and I feel like there's, again, there's a level of service that the legislature has set, and they're, they're sending a pot of money, and I almost feel like they think that's supposed to cover it.
Yeah, I don't wanna use the word pot, they're sending us a little pocketful of money.
And I believe you're right, that's a.
Don't say pot, that's a.
I'm funding another one.
And, and I do think we need to continue to talk to them about that, because I don't, I didn't see the article that, that Mr. Pitchen was referring to, with the article with representative.
Yeah, I saw that.
Did you, okay, I, I saw, please, I guess I missed that one.
I got it.
Has he, has he figured out a way to get us to the $23,000, they'd be up.
Yes, yeah.
But they may not have all the information, is, is in fairness to them, and so that's why I think it's good that we, we talk to them as well.
They shouldn't make the bills and mandates without the information.
We agree.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item, is our attorney legal matters, Mr. Bradshaw.
I've spoken enough.
Okay, all right, we need to approve the minutes.
Approval, okay.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second amendment, counts to approve the minutes, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Okay, well, to our citizen comment time, are there any citizen comments? In the close of business, we offer citizen comments, so we're gonna go there now again. Are there any citizen comments? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to the board member committee reports, and here we go to the business. So, we'll start with Mr. Muller. Okay, that's right?
Yes, you do. Oh, boy, I. Ginger took good care of me walking my first house, and I made it up the rampant crest, and it was good, and I, I did. And I, I did get some of those people, I had one girl register the night before, and she showed up, so I'm glad that we got that thousand, we're going to get the extra stuff. And Sunday, I went to the FESL presentation for the Holocaust, and they presented a film this year. And believe it or not, one of the ladies had contacted the producer of the film, and she'd missed it on TV, and she actually bought the DVD, the lady that put the film together, and it was an awesome one, about a grandson and his grandfather with still tattoos. And so, the grandson was asking his great-grandfather questions about Austria. And so, Susan Vaughn from Visual Empire was there, and she said that she taught the Holocaust. They were concerned, but I said, well, our school's teaching. And she wanted to know if we could put it in the classroom, and then all copyright came up like that, that if we could somehow negotiate with that producer to put it in our schools. It was a very, very touching film between this ten-year-old great-grandson and his grandfather. And, and it was the actual, they wanted, the producer wanted to put another child in there, and the great-grandfather said, no, it'll be my grandson or anybody. And you could, you could see the love and the tenderness and the care as this, the boy asked questions and the great-grandfather answered it. And so, that's, she was going to try and do a couple more, but if we can get our hopes for that film, it would be very, very moving and touching for our kids in the classroom.
It is FSA time again. Or, as somebody said, you know, it's April, and then somebody reminded, no, it's testing month again. But I have to tell you, we have amazing educators, and I want to share some, show you guys something that one of our amazing educators did. They got for each of their students a little ray, a little stingray. And they wrote on it, they left, for each one of their students, here's a ray of confidence to remind you and show you what you know, and relax. It's just a celebration of knowledge. This teacher referenced, and they were sharing it with some of their colleagues, which is what I love about the social media, are, you know, these colleagues, they've become, you know, learning communities. And so, they were saying, they just said, trying to get away from sugar and sweets. I can tell you, we haven't figured that out on this board. For this FS year, FSA year. So, a little push, a little plush ray to give them a ray of confidence, regardless of the outcome, I'm proud of them. That was by someone that Mr. Mullin knows pretty well, and that was by Michael Mullin at Citrus Springs Elementary. And I was, I just, that really caught my attention, and I wanted to lift that out to you all. The other thing, just as a reminder, Golden Citrus on April twenty-sixth, the superintendent's golf classic on April twenty-first. Those go to an incredibly important cause, which is our educational foundation. Again, Mr. Dodd, we were very blessed to have you, not just as our chair, but also as another expert up there. I know, I believe HR or risk management was part of your duties and responsibilities over the years, so you, you don't just come with a little bit of knowledge, but, but a lot, and it helps us as board members.
Because if you're going to announce, don't leave out Matt Fielday this Saturday.
Oh, Matt Fielday, thank you.
Not a problem.
I'm going to be there.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kenny, thank you. I have a couple items that I do want to give you. We had discussed earlier in the year about our committee assignments, and I would like to give you a copy of these items, so that you can look at these. And also, our SAC committee assignments, we're going to discuss these at our April meeting, and I was going to make the assignments at the May meeting. That way, we can follow in line with the school improvement plans, and we would kind of follow the school year. And so, what I'd like to ask of all of you is to consider this, you know, I've kind of, thinking about my time on SAC committees, and I know at one time I had to cover the Rockcrusher Elementary School SAC committee, and it was kind of nice to see a different school. And I talked to Ms. Ferrerami about how things have been done in the past, with rotations and things that we've done. And I thought, well, maybe a good way to start would be to look at one school that you would be willing to, to give up. Most of us have four. Now, I have, on here, there is one area, or one area, I just wanted to make sure you know that, that Mrs. Powers had asked for Citrus High School, and I did make that change with her with WTC, because she was doing a, I believe it was a study, right? She was doing a study, and so, she asked for Citrus High School, and so, I had made that swap with her to take with Kujia Technical College. But, so, I technically don't have Citrus High School right now. She does, but I have Central Ridge, Fort City, Embers Primary, and WTC. And so, one of the things that I would like us to be able to have is, you know, at least one high school or middle school each, there's seven of those, and there's only five of us, so we should each have at least a high school or a middle school. Some of us will have two of those, but I just wanted to make sure that, as you look at that, in my case, you know, we could call with Kujia Technical College a high school, I guess, and I know Mr. Kennedy has the Cypress Creek on there, and so, that's kind of a different avenue, too. But what I would like, and I'd just like to have a discussion, first of all, what you all thought, if it's something that you would be willing to give up a school in light of being offered another school, and you, we could give those choices, you could give those choices to Ms. Ferrerami, and she could give them to me, so that we can make a decision at the May meeting on how we wanted to go. What do you all think?
You want all of us to have a high school, because only.
Well, a high school or a middle school.
I've got two middles and two elementars.
Yeah, so, you need to make sure you have at least one middle or high school.
Yeah.
So, there's seven middle, and middle, and, oh, there's, you know, four middle schools, three high schools, so there's seven. But in my case, I would, since I've given up Citrus High School, you know, I would, I would give up one of my elementary schools in order to get a middle school or high school, is what I was thinking. But, well. That, I'm going to, I'm going to let you all.
You will email Ms. Ferrerami.
Well, that, that would work, wouldn't it, Ms. Ferrerami? If they could email her, at Ms. Ferrerami, and then I could look at, look over those and.
Are we still covering Renaissance? Is that one that, because I know it's changed, is it? Okay.
Ms. Powers covers.
Is it? Okay.
So, you know, look over the list. Hey, I certainly think.
No, there it is.
You know, it's kind of hard, I mean, we could have a discussion in meeting, but, you know, when we talk about trading and this and that, it might just be easier just to, to put them out there, what you do want to give up, and, you know, you know, not sure which school we would get, but I would try to make sure we ensure one middle or high school for each person.
Just give up one of the.
Just, yeah, just, just let her know which one that you would give. Right, yeah, yeah. And then now, on the committee assignments, you know, it's kind of different, and we have some areas of expertise. I know Ms. Bryant has been heavily involved with the School Board Insurance Trust and health insurance, and there is a little bit of learning curve there. And, you know, I know that Mr. Kennedy's had technology and facilities, and his strengths. I've had, you know, the Safety Committee, and, you know, Ms. Counsel's having the Calendar Committee, Ms. Powers on the Guidance Plan Committee, you know, there's some strengths there that we have. But I didn't know what your thoughts were on these, if you would like to consider the same, giving up one of your assignments and taking a different one, or, you know, what the general consensus was, what your thoughts were on this. What do you think?
See, it's up to, it's, you know, the chairman, I'm, I think it's always kind of, it's the same thing. It's, I love that we have some expertise, it's sometimes good to rotate occasionally, too.
Right.
I mean, I can, I could see one that I'd be, you know, willing to sit there and, you know, and throw back, and if somebody wants to rotate somebody in it, that'd be fine with me. But if we want to keep it the same, that's fine, too. I'm flexible. Bryant, what are your thoughts?
How come I want to give up?
Okay.
Not a problem.
And Ms. Counsel, do you want?
I could give up one, yeah.
Okay. I mean, then we can do some swapping around, too. Swap would be the same thing, we'll look at that, if you get email, Ms. Ferrerami, and we'll look at that, and if that would be good.
Okay.
Excellent.
You can get the rest of safety.
There's something, and you can't give up, too. Thank you.
All right. Now, I do have, I want to make the board aware of this, and, you know, whatever the pleasure the board is, but, you know, I was chosen to serve on the Margaret Stillman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission, and Sheriff Volatieri from Penales County is the chair, and he has set our first meeting for April twenty-fourth in Broward County at Parkland, and we're, then we're going to be part of the meeting as a tour of the school facility. And so, that is our, our scheduled workshop meeting, and, you know, I don't like missing workshops. I don't like missing any meetings, I don't think I've missed any since I've been on the board. Certainly, I know Mr. Kennedy as the vice chair, and this board is strong enough, I mean, without me being here, but we could, you know, April twenty-third or April twenty-fifth could be an option. I will be returning home tonight at the twenty-fourth, so I would be here the twenty-fifth, but I don't leave until the afternoon of the, of the twenty-third. So, those are options that I would like to, to present, but I.
You back the twenty-fifth?
I will be back the twenty-fifth.
I will be back tonight. The advantage of the twenty-fifth is Mondays are always tough, the superintendent's usually got tons of meetings with staff and so forth. We did it maybe on the twenty-fifth.
On the twenty-second.
We'd be, you know.
Well, I want you all, there is an editorial board meeting that day, we could do it maybe at ten o'clock.
I believe before any of that, some of my staff just wanted to.
Are they? Okay.
Yeah, well, it says, I mean, it's.
The other one is, is what about the twenty-sixth? And just do it in the morning? And I know we have Golden Citrus in the evening, but I think we've done that before, where we had that, so we could just do it on Thursday. Oh, wait, you're gone, Stowe, I'm sorry. That, that doesn't help. I'm sorry. Never mind.
So, you know, I'm, you know, obviously, these things are going to come up, we don't have the schedule of the commission meetings yet, so I do not know, you know, what's going to happen down the road, but hopefully we'll know, I'll know in two weeks, what my schedule's going to be.
What was wrong on Monday morning?
I just was thinking.
I don't have any.
Superintendent.
Monday morning, the twenty-third. I could do Monday morning, the twenty-third.
You could do Monday morning, the twenty-third.
I could do it, I just didn't know, I was, it was for superintendent. The other one thing that we've done in the past is, we could just do a double on, on May, and May eighth, and do a workshop in the morning if we wanted.
You definitely have to come in. You know, I.
Well, that's an idea, too, I didn't know what, what has to come.
Just remember, in May, we usually don't do a workshop.
That's correct.
Because of all the things we have going on, so.
Do we need to bring that on the twenty-fourth? On the copy of contracts, so it has to be done on the twenty-fourth?
We also have some cross issues. Hire several, make your recommendations, and be able to post them.
So, you need to have a meeting for that.
Unless you all give me the authority, this law or positions won't go. We've done this in the past, where we posted things, and it may affect until like July one, but we're going to have to post them.
Well, and again, I don't, I mean, the meetings can go on without me, I mean, it's,